Are we ready? Good morning, it's nine thirty, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, I'm your Chair, Councilor Liu, welcome to the Wednesday, April sixteenth Committee of the whole meeting. So first off, we have council announcements, any council announcements, Mayor West?
Thank you very much, so I just wanted to give a shout out that this week is the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, it runs from April thirteenth to nineteenth. This is a week-long event at a time to celebrate those who dedicate their lives to serving the public, much like our very own emergency telecommunications who are working for the Richmond Hill Fire and Emergency Services. It's a week where everyone can be made aware of their hard work, their professionalism and their dedication. You know, it's amazing and you know, every now and again, we'll hear a nine-one-one call on, you know, on social media or whatever. And it really is amazing that the the voice on the other end of that call is calm, it's practical, it's it's all the things you need when things are going wrong and you're having a very bad day. And the work that these folks do are, it really is quite heroic and probably very much behind the scenes and potentially overlooked. So we really do wanna celebrate and and honor the folks that work for our Richmond Hill Fire and Emergency Services in our telecommunications service. And and I really do think on behalf of council that we wanna spend this week thinking a little bit about the voice on the other end of the call when when you're having a bad day. So thank you very much to all of those folks and I wish you a very wonderful week and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Mayor West, next we have Councilor Tree.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, so through Mr. Chair to the public, we have a three events coming related with the environment protections. The first one, this first one will be the yard waste collections. From yesterday, April fifteenth, we start to collect yard waste, so if branches, grass or whatever, it start from this week. So please be careful or be noticed by. The second one is for the safety of our communities. So we are hiring more school crossing guard now, so we are short of the resources. So September will come in, so hopefully we have more resources can report and register for this cross guarding to keep our kids, especially school areas, safe. The third one is this next week, we'll be starting from the cities green up garbage collecting events. So for my community, we organize around seventeen parks, we organize a lot of volunteers to clean the garbages. But if there's time conflicts, please join or register by yourself, try to clean your own, your own street or your gardens or nearby parks as well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Tree, next, Mayor West again, because he forgot something.
It's an encore performance, I sorry, I just wanted to say a big thank you to all of the staff, both from my office, including Kate, who works with me, and also the staff from the Public Works Department for helping to put on the maple syrup festival this past weekend. It was a really great turnout, we had quite a number of people show up, which was really great. And there was a lot of learning about the city, a lot of, you know, getting to know your friends and neighbors. And that's really what this was all about and the the maple syrup and the sweetness that goes with it was kind of an added bonus. But I would also like to just give a shout out to the now twenty twenty-five reigning pancake flipping champion, our our very own Councilor Liu. And and as I said at the event, you know, he did take the the title from from Colin Alexander, who is our District Two Superintendent or Commander. And but the the only thing about winning the that particular title is that breakfast is at Castro's House later. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, I think I'm in trouble now then.
Yes.
All right, so next we have Councilor Chan, oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor and Regional Councilor Chan.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, yeah, looking forward to that breakfast in your place, thank you. Good morning, everyone, yeah, and talking about giving recognition and thank you, our hardworking staff. I just want to also share that last week, actually, April seventh to eleventh is Canada Public Health Week. And I have the occasion to speak with the Acting Medical Officer Health of York Region, who actually with her team have worked very hard delivering thirty-six programs services for those who are not aware of for all of York Region, including Richmond Hill. And in particularly lately, we also have heard about the appears to be increasing numbers of incidents of certain particularly infectious diseases, namely measles. So Public Health Team hard at work as well, I have to have the privilege to attend the class of twenty twenty-four new graduates of the York Region Paramedic Services in Newmarket this past Monday. And it so happens that this year, twenty twenty-five, is the twenty-fifth anniversary of the establishment of the York Paramedics that providing again, one point two eight million people in York Region Services when it's time, when it's needed with care and compassion. So I think that I just want to show out, give recognition, hardworking York Region Public Workers who takes care of Richmond Hill residents as well, also the York Paramedics, happy twenty-fifth anniversary, thank you.
Thank you, any more council announcements? Seeing none, introduction of emergency time-sensitive matters, seeing none also. Adoption of the agenda, we have twelve agenda items today, no public hearings, one presentation, six delegations and one member motion, can I have a mover to adopt the agenda? Councilor Davidson, all those in favor, opposed, carry unanimously. Disclosures of pecuniary interests and general nature thereof, seeing none. Identification of items requiring separate discussion, we have quite a long agenda today. So feel free to put up your hands, Councilor Tree.
Can I extract eleven point three?
Eleven point three.
Eleven point six.
Eleven point six.
Eleven point ten.
It's already polled.
Eleven point eleven.
Eleven point eleven.
That's it from my plate, thank you.
That's it, okay, anyone else? Oh, okay, okay, so I'm going on the consent agenda as eleven point one, point two, point four, point seven, point eight, point twelve. Am I correct, Clark, Mr. Clark, and also there is something regarding eleven point nine?
Yes, thank you, through the chair for the better of the committee whole, I suggested the chair hold eleven point nine. There need to, we need to make a technical correction to the staff recommendation.
All right, okay, so eleven point nine is also being polled. Councilor Davidson? It's already been polled, yeah, eleven point five has already been polled, all right, so last chance, last call, okay, seeing none, all right, so adoption of the remainder of agenda items, Mayor West, all those in favor, opposed, carry unanimously. All right, so we will go straight to the presentation, there is a presentation by City Manager Darlene Jocelyn and Chief Transformation Officer Anthony Ianucci regarding Richmond Hill's continuous improvement journey, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Members of Council, I'm pleased to be here today to share a presentation on the Continuous Improvement Program here at the city along with the Chief Transformation Officer Anthony Ianucci. The Continuous Improvement Program is rooted in a philosophy of continual learning where every department, team and individual has the opportunity to identify areas for improvement, suggest changes and take action to implement solutions. As we continue to navigate fiscal challenges and the growing needs of our community, it's essential for us to adopt a mindset of continuous improvement across our organization in our service delivery operations and our budget practices. City administration is committed to delivering effective and efficient services that provide enhanced climate, client experience and ensure value for tax dollars. This is achieved through Richmond Hill's Continuous Improvement Program through an ongoing efficiency review of our services and our budgets and through creative ways that staff are addressing complex problems. Through this program, we aim to foster a culture of excellence where improvement is not a one-time goal, but an ongoing commitment. Whether it's increasing operational efficiencies, enhancing public safety or finding new ways to engage our residents, the Continuous Improvement Program ensures that we stay responsive to the needs of our community and residents. We're proud of the progress that we have made so far, but we understand that this is just the beginning. This commitment to continuous improvement is not a destination, but rather a journey, one that requires the support, guidance and involvement of all of us. When staff and leaders at all levels are empowered to suggest improvements, it leads to creative solutions that enhance service delivery. Today, we're here to highlight this program for council and members of the public and to share some of the successes that we've had with this program over the past few years. So I without further ado, I'd like to introduce Anthony Ianucci, our Chief Transformation Officer, who's gonna walk council through about a twenty-minute presentation, thank you.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and and Council. So today, I'd like to share our continuous improvement journey and there's a number of slides here, but we'll go relatively quickly, next slide, please. Next slide, overview and history, so a bit about where we've been. So Richmond Hill started this journey around twenty eighteen, we kicked it off with basically doing some training of individuals who, training in lean methodology and then delivering some projects, but as we all know, in twenty twenty, things changed. Next slide, please. So just to back up a little bit, what's lean for those who who aren't familiar? Lean's a way of thinking and creating needed value for the customer. And we'll talk about that, who the customer is, it could be anybody at the end of a process. With fewer resources and less waste, it's also a practice consisting of continuous experimentation improvement to achieve that value and getting down to zero waste, so that's the idea of you'll never get to zero. You may also have heard of Six Sigma, Lean Six Sigma, it's a sim, it's part of the same lean practice. It is customer-focused and based on data. And because it was born in Japan, a lot of the qualifications are based on the similar kind of belts. So you'll hear white belt, yellow belt, green belt and black belt at the highest level, next slide, please. So during the pandemic, you know, we took that crisis as an opportunity and changed a lot of the things as well as the way we enabled our lean journey as we were doing that. So we needed, we had the need to create a service catalog, we obviously had many services we were delivering, we needed to sort of move those services online for customers, people couldn't come here anymore, but they still needed to consume our services. Was we took that opportunity to not just take those services such as they were and such as we were delivering them and putting them online, but also applying a lean lens to be able to improve how we delivered them as we were putting them online, therefore expediting how we were delivering to our customer. So the value of continuous improvement was starting, starting to take shape during that sort of agile process, next slide. So this chart, I'm not gonna go into detail, you've seen it before during budget presentations. But after identifying the services that could move online, we began this agile method of delivering solutions while incorporating that lean lens as I described it. This resulted in savings of time for the customer in receiving, which was really important, and also in time for staff in delivering some of those services. Some divisions embraced the opportunity and continued to look at services and the processes to deliver them at every opportunity. This results in thousands of hours of savings in processing time and waiting time for our customer, residents, businesses we deal with and each other as we're working through processes in our organization, next slide, please. So over, as as the dust settled in that move to to digital, we we continued to move towards a data-driven performance culture and really, so we're all looking at things the same way by doing measurements rather than opinion and feelings about how things are going. So we continue to expand our service catalog and we dug further into justifications of services, so not just what we do, but kind of why we do them, to make sure we're prioritizing and develop a more formal performance measures. To do that, we sort of introduced the, what's called the art, what we call a management framework, organizational management framework. And we use that to review our services and align methods, so we're all kind of talking the same way, trying to use that as a touchstone and begin moving towards a continuous improvement culture. So not just one office, as Darlene said, but sort of a culture of how we do things. And we trained leadership and staff along that journey. Next, next slide, please. So I do have the team with me today, they're gonna wave. But the continuous improvement and part of our transformation team, it's a small team, very qualified black belts in lean who have experienced in various industries. And we've had, obviously, before this team, we've we had a team, but it's similar, some with municipal experience, some with a lot of different, you know, healthcare, et cetera, and bringing that to Richmond Hill. Qualified business-minded people to help the organization and and the very smart people we have here in being able to work through lean methodology, next slide, please. So this is basically the framework we're talking about and I'll just explain it briefly, starting from left to right. Obviously, the most important thing is the customer, it really begins with who's benefiting from this thing that we're doing. And as I said before, it could be our residents, it could be people who do business with us, it could be council, it could be anyone based on our processes. Second, we look at, you know, why, why do we deliver this service? And that helps us prioritize, which ones should we be focusing on, especially when, whether it's time of crisis or not. Then the service catalog itself, a definition of those processes, internal and external services that we provide. And the how is the piece where continuous improvement really shines. Looking at our people, our processes and the technology we use to deliver. Now, when I think of technology, I say those words, everybody thinks of computers, but technology is our snowplows, technology is the things, the tools we have in our hands to be able to do whatever it is we do. So this isn't just about the inside business, it's about the outside business as well and maybe even more. And then finally, the results, right? Without data, we really don't know if we're improving something, if without measuring something, we don't know how well we're doing. And maybe some things are working pretty good, so we can focus on something else as we continue to measure. At the bottom, you'll see a line that goes right back to the beginning and that's, that's the loop of continuous improvement. Again, it's that journey, because do, things do change, next slide, please. So this is a snapshot of service catalog such as it sat probably about six months ago. But as we, as we talked about, we continue to refine how we look at these things, how business changes and working with all of the divisions, collaborating with them to be able to define things as best we can. And we continue the process of refining as part of our journey on the services that we're doing. It also formed the the basis of the service charter that was delivered earlier this year, next slide, please. So a little bit about the methodology. With better definition of services and measures, we can now look at improvement efforts. And to do that, we use two approaches, our experienced and skilled internal staff, my team and the rest of the team here at Richmond Hill who have been doing this work and can and know where where to look at and where it's warranted, we bring external expertise, because sometimes it's just important to have a lens come from outside to help us look at things. This allows the city to identify and prioritize improvement opportunities. And implementation of recommendations that come out of these reviews are led by internal teams. Next slide, please. So some examples of where we use external expertise is, you know, we're currently under a customer service review. We did a contract management process review for our construction projects with that team, reviewing of development planning processes during all the changes that were happening and we continue to work on implementing, as well as we have a longstanding partnership with York Region auditors. And they come and basically do pretty much a review a year for us, sometimes if we can fit two. We've done things like fleet reviews that have allowed us to improve how we manage fleet, council-led events, limitation of liability process, and we're scheduling a process for twenty twenty-five. Again, that brings some external look into some of the things that we do and we prioritize that through ELT on an annual basis to be able to identify places, next slide, please. So a little bit about what goes on, I mean, it's for us, we're connecting back to our program with the goals of building a culture and creating value. And we build that culture through our Continuous Improvement Development Program and the surveys, keep an eye on what we're doing, as well as the big projects that we do internally, and we mentioned Black Belt project here, but we also have green belts that do projects for us. I'm not gonna go into definition of what the difference is, but. So next slide, please. So a little bit about our development program, this is probably the thing, and one of the things I'm most proud of is that on a regular basis, twice a year, we identify, you know, we have this running lean development program for our future leaders of the organization. And the program differs from other programs where it's not just training, but requires our candidate to complete a yellow belt project in the workplace with the black belt coach, so they can exercise what they learned by solving problems in their day-to-day jobs. So training is nice, you get a certificate, but now this is immediate application of that training, two things happen. We have a graduate who can be obviously proud of what they've delivered. And secondly, we just, we get a benefit, we get some improvement to a day-to-day thing. And we've all worked in and and in our day-to-day lives where we wonder, why are we doing that? Or why do we, why does this work like this? This is an opportunity for our candidates to go and tackle that question with their team that they work with every day, next slide, please. So just to highlight some of the projects, and I believe this was also in previous slides. Some of the ones, you know, streamlining booking processes for for our residents, we use our services. Digitizing pro necessary program information, so we're not asking somebody three times the same question. They implemented the acts, we have access to that information to deliver our services. Another project we did was immediately savings for residents in driving to City Hall for for services where it didn't make sense. So these are the types of things that are external facing, next slide, please. From an internal perspective and in continuing to improve what we do, you know, some some to do with inventory management, you know, always a place where, you know, there's improvement, reducing time from a financial and human resources perspective in delivering services that we are a must and improving expression inspection process by and therefore increasing capacity, our ability to do more with the same amount of staff, next slide, please. So that's sort of our development program and again, creating that culture. Some of the bigger projects that we've worked on over the years, I mean, Richmond Hill Center of Performing Arts, being able to do review of how we deliver parks and services infrastructure. And, you know, these are some of the ones where either the benefit was art savings right out of the budget or was our ability to improve how we deliver service by reinvesting and not having to ask for more budget, just using budget we have, but being able to make a shift. And one of the ones that was most recently brought to my attention, and this is, this is the, the cool part about this is they don't have to all come out of my office, that culture is now being created and a recent change made in community standards. When we talked about by law enforcement, that enhanced service delivery, improved staff engagement was not just about dollars and cents, reduced sick time and increased revenue by over six hundred thousand dollars. So these are the types of things where we have people thinking that way now, just challenge the status quo, have a look at it, but use data, it's not just what you feel, show me the numbers, right? And that also requires bringing everybody along with you. Some of the other projects we've done over the years, next slide, please. Some of the other projects, you know, we've done a number of projects, Black Belt and Green Belt and Fire, being able to improve how we do inspections and optimizing how inspection process is done, also optimizing use of our training and training facility that we have, working with the fire team, next slide, please. So I'm not gonna dwell on this slide, it's very detailed, it's really just for illustrative purposes. But I'm just gonna say that this is the the level of detail required to do a project like this is is pretty deep and it's required because you want it to be repeatable. You don't want it to be one person's opinion, someone else doing the same project in the same way should come up with the same results. It's a data-based method to to make effective recommendations for improvement. Once those recommendations are made, then the, you know, the proof is in the pudding. You have to go and deliver these improvements pieces and see and then watch and see if you're getting the results you're expecting, next slide, please. So some additional results, next slide, please. This is really talking about some of the benefits over the years of that yellow belt program I talked about, where people who are interested in continuous improvement, take some training, deliver some projects. And we keep a running total, we haven't put twenty twenty fours in there yet because typically after a project's implemented, we're watching it for about three months to see what the actual benefit was, some things are theoretical until you implement them. But as you can see, our yellow belts have done a great job in providing benefit across the organization at very little cost. This is part of what they regularly do, except for that training and the coaching they have. But most importantly, it is part of changing the culture and moving towards measuring benefit, next slide, please. I also want to stress that improvement projects are more than just saving time, dollars and cents. There are many non-tangible improvements from our projects, some are related to safety, employee morale, customer satisfaction. So, you know, we didn't save much, but the custom, we didn't save much time on this, but we're doing the same thing, but the customer is more satisfied with the end result, both internally and externally, just making a better place to work and and live. Next slide, please. So what's next, where do we go from here, next slide, please. So the Richmond, the leadership have solidified the commitment to continuous improvement by creating a goal for twenty twenty-five to identify and measure overall improvements in the organization. Sort of really, you know, ramping up how we measure things. And the strategy and transformation team will continue to work to enable measurement with the great leaders we have in the organization working towards this goal, next slide, please. We're also working on a very ambitious project, one that does consume a lot of time, process that known as budget to pay, which basically means from the place where we kick off and say it's budget time to the place where we pay an invoice. And if you could think about the process that happens all the way along there and how many hands actually touch it. So we've been mapping those processes out and looking to obviously streamline and then make changes to our system that enable that process to make it easier for staff to get this done. That's obviously better for everyone, there's lots of opportunity to save there. We're also working on projects in key other projects in community services, planning and building. The one thing about budget to pay though, in my conversations with other municipalities, a lot of them are struggling with this process, poorly defined and difficult to manage. So we're, we're kind of leading the way for Richmond Hill to kind, to do as much as we can to be efficient in this process. Next slide, please. So as part of our strategic plan, this effort relates to pillar three. So this isn't just sitting out by itself, you know, strengthening our foundations in providing quality customer service, continuous improvement in continually improving our services and making evidence-based decisions, right, in our strategic plan. So part of what we're doing is also connecting things, right, and increasing visibility and transparency in what we do, ensuring we're linking to the deliverable of those aspirational deliverables and pillars in our strategic plan, next slide, please. So promote, we also promote Richmond Hill. So Richmond Hill, currently, we chair the Ontario Lean Community of Practice. We've been members of the Ontario Lean Community of Practice for a long time. Currently, it's a represented by a number of municipalities and regions, including York, Peel, Mississauga, the list is there. And Roxanne Apuya, who's one of our team members, is the chair. I'm proud to say that, you know, we're chairing that organization, providing leadership for municipalities as we all kind of work through this journey. We'll be hosting the next meeting here at Richmond Hill at our Continuous Improvement Celebration, June seventeenth. The other thing that we're kind of working on right now is, as I said before, is kind of rego going through our service catalog again and looking at places where we can focus efforts as we move forward and doing some prioritization. And next slide, please. So I thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. It's all good news story. It's now question and answer period, councillor Davidson.
How did you know? Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you for that report and it's a lot to take in, but. I guess it's important for all of us here and for residents to know that we're constantly trying to improve. I I'm I'm new to lean, but so if we have four or three black belts and yellow belts. Are they, does it matter whether they're in every department, how do you? Does every department in Richmond Hill have the capacity with the help of the lean ethos? Do they have people there to go to or to help, like I I'm just wondering how how we reach every department?
Through the chair. So we prioritize working with with E L T, our current black belts are assigned to departments.
Can you tell us what E L T is?
Sorry, exec, the executive lead team at Richmond Hill. So our black belts are currently assigned to departments and the prioritization gets created on which projects to do. On the yellow belt side of things, it's mostly. I'll say volunteer and the ability for people to 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 bring time to a project because it's not trivial. But we we do a, we are assigned to departments and if from a capacity perspective, you know, we have to prioritize for that perspective, there's only three people and they're. Three very busy people, but this is the idea of building a culture, right? It's not just the three that are, you know, the only the only ones looking at continuous improvement, it's really across the organization. So the yellow belts, then when they go back to sort of doing their regular day to day job, we're hoping that they can focus then on identifying opportunities for improvement.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, is is this something that could be applied to, for example, if I wanted. To do a some kind of a study of the Windrow program, can these lean. Experts be assigned to a specific program, like very specific. To do an analysis that doesn't require a third party consultant, through you, Mr. Chair.
Through the chair, yes, I mean, depending on what priority in the organization provides, we could. You know, adjust things to do any any particular program. In a lot of cases, benchmarking, however, is part of it, so you are looking outside as well, but the expertise we have in house would be able to do that, working with the business. To be to be clear, you're always working with the people delivering the work, right, and you're not making it up sort of on the side, you have to look at what's happening internally.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to say for like my whole working life, from when I was, you know. Dressing up as a whatever I was at Wonderland to every job I've ever had. I've always had ideas of what I thought could improve, but nobody asked. So I'm wondering, is there ever an opportunity where the city can ask every single person who works here, I don't mean all at once necessarily. But from the summer students to, you know, access to everybody who works here, not who don't talk to the executive. What's the one thing you would do to improve your job? I promise you those people have excellent ideas that we should listen to, maybe you're already doing that.
So through the chair, when I send out my, the team, we send out our sort of call for who wants to work on a yellow belt. It doesn't go through the leadership, goes to everybody. So the idea that everyone is invited to learn about lean, we also have. Computer based training about continuous improvement that anyone in Richmond Hill can take to understand a little bit about the program. And it is about to your to your point, creating an environment where if you can be comfortable to point out something that you think is wasteful or. A process that doesn't seem to make any sense and it will not fall on deaf ears, it's about bringing back, that's why that goal we talked about, organization wide. To say we're all going to be looking at those opportunities, however small they are, and capturing those benefits. The last thing I'll say about that as well is that's how a lot of lean yellow belt projects are born, because the people who. Volunteer to be part of the program, they're bringing a project with them, something that them and their team have been looking at for years and wondering why we can't do this better or different.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, I mean, actually asking everybody who works here occasionally. What's the one thing you would suggest, not whether like, cause yellow lean, that would maybe be intimidating or maybe somebody over, sorry.
Oh, city manager?
Through you, Mr. Chair, just for clarification, what Anthony has done here today is highlighted the yellow belt program, which. Which really takes those individual departmental or division. Items forward, but we do train at a white belt level as well, so all of our staff. Have well, white belt understanding of the continuous improvement program. Each of the commissions, so each of the departments are responsible for continued conversation with all of their staff members. Providing opportunities for all staff to have input, hey, we're doing something this way, why, why can't we look at doing it a different way? And those, the leadership within those departments will bring that forward. Whether that becomes a yellow belt project, or it's something we can do a quick fix on, or it needs a deeper dive on a black belt project. So there's a lot of spokes in the wheel, but as I had said initially, every individual. Every team, every division, every department has been trained and is constantly. Consistently communicated with in terms of continuous improvement. The goal here is when we come forward as an administration to budget, when we're presenting you our operating and or capital budgets. I wanted to ensure council understands that we are in a cyclical cycle of doing these reviews. So by the time it comes to me, my questions to the commissioners are around continuous improvement. What have you looked at? Have you looked at doing things differently? Have you looked at reassigning resources? All of those things are how we present you our draft operating budget. But everybody has input currently. Difficult to have twelve hundred part time staff, especially our summer staff. Who are just platooned in to do a job for two months and go back to school. To get that training, but we have a lot of kind of year round part time staff and contract staff and full time staff. That are involved in the process, I hope that helps clear that up.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Davidson, would you like to move a motion to receive the presentation with thanks? All right, good, we have a motion on the table, and next we have regional councillor and deputy mayor Chan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, city manager, I like that title. Chief Transformation Year is always moving forward, continuous improvement, I like that, oh, thank you. And I also believe in cultural change, it would take time for service. And that's why I I push for that service charter. And having said that, I'm just curious as to, I thought it is also meant to be some kind of measure. Because in the service charter that I'm aware of, it's spelled explicitly, number of days, when you make this permit application, that would be a turnaround. Now, but I don't see in the twenty eight slides, including a thank you, there was no mention, is it? It's just assume or pursue or whatever the right term is. This is something moving in parallel, right, because presumably a year or two years from now. The C I continues improvement, transformation, you'll go back and say, hey, this used to be twenty days, now we can do nineteen and a half days. So through Mr. Chair, I just wonder what's the thinking or thought aligning the two together, because we put the numbers out there for people and public to follow now.
So through the chair. That's, you're absolutely right, these two things are moving in parallel, they're really, there's a really one, one in the same. In the coming, our sort of, as part of our plan is to pub, start to publish more about performance and how we're performing. But again, we need to walk before we can run for two reasons, one, we want to be accurate in the data, and a lot of the challenge is capturing data in a place where. We're moving, you know, we're improving on how we do that and we don't want to put wrong data out there. So in the coming months, probably in the next few months, we'll be looking at. Putting up something out for the public to see on on some of those services, specifically on how we're doing. But again, we're not trying to boil the ocean, because we want to be, we want to do a good job at this. So we'll be continuing to enhance that as time, as time progresses, so we'll have an inaugural launch. In the coming months, and then from there, we'll continue to enhance the data that's on the site, so exactly as you were suggesting, just moving in parallel.
Thank you very much, and now I turn to the slides after a general comment. I encourage you see in the number of slides, the indicators or measures been mentioned. Slide seven, slide ten, slide twenty seven, and the slide ten, it talks about, or it shows two hundred eighty six performance measures. Great, but it may be, is that the measures are going to be. Conducted or measured or tracked by not necessarily your office, as you mentioned, that you only have a small team. Would that be up to each a division, each department commissioner, he or she is accountable within their department? Okay, track this, so at the end of the day, that's exactly what you have by the departments, I'm just curious as to process. Just highlights, of course, through Mr. Chair.
Through the chair. Exactly, it's really about helping the management of each one of the divisions. In identifying the services and then identifying measures that makes sense, not all of these services are directly related to outward facing, a lot of them are inward facing. But without measuring, you kind of don't know whether, you know, you're probably doing, you're probably doing well. But you can't celebrate how well you're doing because you're not measuring, nor can you look at where do you want to apply continuous improvement in the places where you think. So this initial a number of measures, I know it's a shocking number, but it was our first goal. And this is as I described at the end of the presentation, is that's, that's part of our next step now is to go back, do some validation. But the measures of these will will be done at the division level by the division, our our team is really about helping. Define the services, define how we measure the services with the with the team, what makes sense to them. And then visualization, working with our friends in information technology, how we do visualization. So everything else, you know, a lot of things are little subsets of what a broader service catalog looks like.
Thank you, I I want to compliment your team, which may have taken leadership, chairing the Ontario Lean Committee of Practice. And on that note, I also noticed is the last line on the slide number twenty seven. Key performance measure updated, is the update for the whole committee Ontario, is the update for the city of Richmond Hill. And that's relating to the question I have on measures, can follow the track I'm asking, measure, measure, measure.
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Slide twenty seven. No, this is, so through the chair. This is specifically what I described with the service catalog, it's us going through our stuff. But then the the other interesting part and what really is helpful with our leadership and and our our participation in the lean community. Is that now we can share with other municipalities what good things they're doing. And apply it to our journey, start to look at that and and also compare the service catalogs where where it makes sense, right, where. How do you measure the service, what are the services that you're providing and how do they look? So again, it gives our business teams, you know, the people trying to deliver things, working really hard, gives them a little help in being able to define and measure.
Thank you, yeah, I I'm totally in agreement that you need to have. Validated key performance measure or K P I indicator, some people call it, you mentioned it as well, otherwise you don't know. Are you getting there or not? And one aspect I I see a couple of times is automation. Is that some kind of, to the extent you can share from the chair, some kind of digitization project? That might be planning, I saw nodding, I would like to perhaps to the extent to share some projects, maybe adding a process. Or maybe completed digitization, for example, all our bylaws. So I don't have to track twenty five pages if I know exactly where this application is fit under this section or subsection, through Mr. Chair.
So through the chair. The automation piece is, it's important to do the stuff before the automation piece, because you need to define the process and what all the steps are. But yes, that's what digitization is really all about, it's like, once you have that defined. Certainly in our budget to pay project right now that we're working on, it's about defining those steps before we spend a ton of money on changing. An application or changing a system or even implementing a new system. So I can't speak to the example you provided, because maybe it's not on our list right now. But but definitely this proceeds automation, every step of the way. Our connection to the I T division has become much stronger and continues to be, since that digitization we were. Rushed to do, let's say, when the pandemic hit. And we've just continued to work together to improve processes and then look at how we automate them.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I'm sure you all know that in certain municipalities, all you do is go to click. And all the municipal codes, we choose meeting dialogue, wherever boom boom would come up, so I think we're moving in a direction, that's why I'm here, right, good. So it talked about customer satisfaction, of course, is internal, meaning. Between or among departments, staff with staff, strategic communications and so on. When you talk about external customer satisfaction, I think on slide number twenty, you say increase, how are we measuring it? I just want to try to get sense through you, Mr. Chair.
So through the chair, so those are measured within those specific projects. And basically, it's it's typically surveys. Be an exit survey or somebody completes the process and our question will be asked. So it's at a very grassroots level, we're not trying to be scientific. But the idea is that reducing steps and making it easier for the customer to get the service may not feel like a big. Change has happened, but if something you do repeatedly and now all of a sudden it takes less steps or it takes less time, you feel that satisfaction. Typically, those little ones were all measured within the projects themselves.
Thank you, and the last word is, I know Chief Transformation Officer is going forward, moving forward, so I wish you best of. Luck in the future endeavors and last word is, let's keep moving forward together, thank you, Mr. Chair, I support the motion.
Thank you, next we have councillor Tree.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chair, so thank you so much for as well to prepare this stuff reports as well, so. I'll say, thank you so much for our city management and also our councillor, Deputy Mayor Godwin Chan. So now we have a service chart here, so we approved last year, it's better for all the residents and also the. This staff to know what is our objective, will we deliver services, there are different expectations, both for this. The residents now, so there are some kind of target for our employees as well. Also, thank you so much for saving the money, if I heard correctly, from this improvement process, we saved around six thousand dollars. Six hundred thousand dollars through this process, it's a great achievement. So my next question regarding to the page twenty five, if Ms. Clark can help me for page twenty five. So on the page twenty five, we discussed about those efficiencies improvement, my question for your team is, it's great, we have a efficiency team, improvement team here. My question is, for now, what is current tools or measurement we're using in our team, we have three black belts here. Is that based on interview, based on meetings, based on email change, based on spreadsheet? They guide those datas, they measure our improvement, for example, whatever the process is, we got twenty percent improvement. What type of tools or process we are currently using? And also in future, as our deputy mayor mentioned, what is our target, can we borrow or using more. Advanced technology with our A I automation, so that we can benefit our bell team, yellow team to achieve more, that is my question, thank you.
Through the chair, I guess, multi part question, so then the first part of the question.
Is for current status, what tools we are using, what process we are following.
So so in lean methodology itself, the tools are pretty much defined, there's different tools we use to be able to work, create workshops. Work with the people doing doing the job. And then being able to identify opportunities for improvement, the way we measure improvement is many, many different ways, but mostly it's about. Removing time, removing steps out of a process, in some cases, those steps are just money, I mean, easily, easy to say. We no longer have to apply for that, or we don't need our residents to apply for this anymore, we've removed that right out, we've done that in the past. With that's direct savings, the other way we measure, and when you talk about, yes, we use spreadsheets and lots of math. So, you know, I didn't put an example up here, I want to spare you all, but. The idea is, again, measuring just time, time it takes to deliver something, and typically when we start a project, we're looking for about thirty percent. That's kind of a goal we set for ourselves, can we find thirty percent improvement here? And again, it goes back to how long this is take, how many steps are in the process? And in lean, you know, some steps are, you know, value added steps, non value added steps and necessary non value added, it's how the methodology works. So we're looking for non value added steps, which basically doesn't get us any closer to the goal, but it's work that we got used to doing, and we've been doing it like this for a long, you always hear that before, I've always done it like this. but it's work that we got used to doing. We've been doing it like this for a long. You always hear that before. I've always done it like this. It allows people the comfort to challenge what they've always done. Um so that's how we typically measure benefit and then we take that and we're working with, we'll be working with finance over the over the course of this year to start refining on how we evaluate those things uh and as as part of continuing in to improve our process. So that's typically the method we use. It's spreadsheets, it's tracking, it's mapping our process and seeing what improvements are being made. Um to your second question, if I understood it correctly, about tools for automation and the way we we are then moving from there. Uh the city has and it has lots of enterprise tools. Um we have a number of systems that are honestly state of the art. Uh but in a lot of cases, we haven't implemented process within those systems uh in the best, most efficient way. That's this, you know, slide twenty five, when you talk about the budget budget to pay. Uh we currently uh have an implementation of S A P, which is one of the biggest D R P systems in the world. And although it's doing a lot of great work, it takes a lot to feed the beast, if you wanna, you wanna, you know, say it, to be able to get the data out. So one of these, one of the things we've realized uh after doing uh some work last year with the business that there's lots of places where we can improve our process and how things go into the tool itself. And although some changes will have to happen to the tool to improve the automation, those are expensive changes. You don't want to do it twice. So we want to make sure that our processes are well defined. We understand what the outcomes are going to be. That will form the basis then for projects moving forward to enhance the tools that everyone uses today. So it's not necessarily bringing new ones in. It's really about taking the ones we have and ensuring that they're serving us in the best way rather than us serving them. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Okay, thank you so much. I think my comment here is as well. So in the future, if you have some good achievements, please let us know. So this way we can notify our residents. City really care about all the taxpayers' money. We're doing our best to improve our efficiencies, also provide transparencies. Thank you. Appreciate.
Thank you. Next speaker is councillor Thompson.
Uh thank you very much uh through the chair. Thank you for the presentation. Um I'm I'm an old school guy. Uh I think the entire E L T knows that I'm an old school guy. I've been in public service my entire life. And so there's been a lot of changes that have happened over my time and uh there's there's a lot of good changes too and I and I do like uh, you know, what what we've seen, but there are certain aspects of it that I still struggle with and have difficulty because we are in the public service business. And what I've, what I see quite often is that when we move to a data capture environment, uh it comes at the expense of the type of public service that we've provided to our customers in the past. Um is, does it work for probably eighty percent of the of our clients out there? Most definitely, I'm sure it is. But it's like the age-old rule. I mean, it's those twenty percent of the customers that cause us eighty percent of the work. And I get that. Uh but I really, I really feel that we have to be still in that market of providing that little bit of extra handholding for clients that are out there. Um so I'm really just wanting to make a comment here because I'm not trying to take away from, you know, uh streamlining, making things a little more efficient, but let's not forget the customer. We we definitely um want to continue to provide the type of service that we're capable of providing. So again, I'm just providing a comment, not a question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through through the chair, can I respond to it?
Please.
Um I also have been in public service for a long time. Um and I I think I don't, I don't want something to be lost in all this. Um the idea is that the people who are serving our customer and our residents, um we're trying to buy back time for them. We're trying to take away things that they have maybe been doing for all of these years that they can see don't provide them enough benefit and take away from us being able to deliver service. So if I can take, if we can take um some steal some time back from feeding the beast, the bureaucracy and all the things that need doing and give that time back to those who are directly working with our customer and making it easier for them to deliver the services. That's the goal, right? You saw the methodology starts with the customer. And uh I don't want to be lost, it it lost anywhere here that this isn't customer first. How we define who the customers depends on the process we're delivering. But this is about customer first and removing all of some extra stuff that we may be asking people to do or have asked them to do that takes them away from being able to deliver service. So I I hope that helps you to kind of see we're we're talking, we're we're heading in the same direction.
Yeah, uh and I I don't want my comments to be misunderstood because absolutely, I I get it. You know, with the changes that we've already made, there's no question that that will have helped eighty percent of those things to make our our processes already that much easier. Um but there will be a lot of people out there that quite often, they don't even know how to ask the question that they're trying to ask. And so if we're only asking the question that they asked, which really wasn't what they're trying to get to in the first place, then that becomes problematic and and we have to be able to provide that type of uh extra service, you know, and and I'm I'm calling it extra service, but it really isn't. This is the type of service we should be providing, you know, plain and simple in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor West.
Uh thank you very much and thanks for the presentation. It was very detailed. Uh I'm not going to get into any of the details because I I think through your presentation, I it's been reconfirmed for me that we are doing what we need to do in this uh corporation to make sure that the money that we collect and that we spend is for the best benefit that we can get for our residents. Um since my time as mayor, I've seen firsthand all of the different things uh that the the city has been doing uh to make sure that that we are, you know, doing the best that we can. And I know from speaking to staff countless numbers of times that every single one of us here at in the city is working to make sure that um we everything does get better. But what you're talking about in this program is uh a formalization um to of creating that, you know, as you said, the culture that every single person here is fully responsible for the the efficiency and the way we're doing things and the way that we can make our community the very best that we can be. So thank you very much. And and I gotta tell you, I'm also really proud of the fact that we're leading um you know, i- in this initiative with other municipalities. I mean, we lead in a lot of things and it's really nice to see that we're also leading in this. So thank you for that. Um one of the things that I see in our organization, I mean, we have over two thousand uh employees here in Richmond Hill and each one of us brings something specific to the table, but the collective that we have uh is very powerful. And if we could engage all two thousand minds, um it does create a very, very powerful um force that we can be looking at the daily processes that we have here and and make sure that we're we're doing it better. So I don't really have any questions. I mean, I I've been very aware a- and following the lean process as we uh have been going since becoming mayor and I know um that, you know, uh the the today's presentation really lays out for council and and the public, um you know, the the mechanics of how this is all working. But at the end of the day, I haven't really met anybody uh from the public that really um is that interested in knowing how we got to be really efficient and delivering excellent services. What they really just want to know is that we're doing the the work behind the the scenes and that's our job as council. Um I know, you know, we've had many, many conversations with with commissioners, with directors, with managers, with the city manager and all of those are always, you know, in the in the vein that we need to do the best that we can and and be more efficient. And, you know, I think the thing is that uh i- i- this is not a destination. Um e- because, you know, the day that you become perfect, the landscape shifts and now you're not perfect anymore. So um it's a matter of always making strides to move the ball forward with the changing environment. And I guess the last thing I would say is that, given the financial challenges that keep me up at night uh a lot, um you know, we're being asked constantly to doing, to do more with less. And, you know, the 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 fiscal reality in our municipality as other municipalities as well is that, you know, we are, we are have downloaded services from other levels of government, which we shouldn't be paying for. Um we have expectations that are new and are and evolving and but we're always wanting to make sure, particularly in this affordable uh crisis that we're in right now, that we're um making sure that we're, you know, getting the least amount of money for the most services. And this is what today's presentation is all about. So thank you very much to you. Thank you to your team, but thank you to all of the the employees that you've engaged um throughout this process and will continue to. And all I would say is, you know, continue to do that work and um and frankly, do it as quickly as we possibly can because uh, you know, the best day to save some money for the taxpayer is probably today. So anyway, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor West. Any more question? And lastly, I would like to, as behalf of council, as the member, as the chair of this committee, thank you very much, uh Mr. Anthony uh Ian Uche um for your contribution and your impact on this organization. In the past eight years, we're set to uh see you stepping down from your role, but uh we're also happy to see you staying with us uh as a as a part-time basis. So thank you very much. Um I don't know if the city manager have any, have anything to add before we uh call the vote?
Uh through you, uh Mr. Chair. Um again, this was a presentation that we felt was necessary so that council was aware of the mechanics that are going on in this organization uh every day that we come to work. Um when we present our budgets to you, you can be assured that we've gone through a continuous improvement, uh look at how we do things. But I also uh appreciate council's uh comments on Mr. Ian Uche's tenure here with the city and I can't tell you how proud I am of him and his team and where they have led this organization, uh especially over the last couple of years. Uh since I've been here in this chair, we've really been able to see the ship turn uh from a continuous improvement culture. Uh and that's in large part due to Anthony's leadership. So nobody was more happy when uh I was able to convince him to stay on and do some special projects in the city manager's office. So you'll see more of him, but Anthony, on behalf of the administration publicly, um I want to thank you so much for the work that you have done and the leadership you've provided in this area.
Through the chair. Uh I want to thank everyone I've had the great opportunity to work with. This is a great place. Uh Richmond Hill is full of dedicated, hard-working, hard-working people, nice people. And that's that ma- you know, may sound like it's not important, but it is because when I'm coming to you and asking you questions about your work, people open their arms, they want to talk about it, they're enthusiastic about it and and they're enthusiastic about continuous improvement. This is a great place. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And we have a motion to receive the presentation with thanks moved by councillor Davidson. All those in favor, opposed, carry unanimously. Thank you. All right. So we uh go next to the uh the delegations. We have six delegations. The first one is uh Sarah Duncan. On behalf of Rogers regarding radio communication and broadcasting antenna, item eleven point ten. And um I would like to excuse myself for a few minutes. I've got to pass the chair to councillor Thompson um for the delegations. I'll be right back. Thank you. Oh, Miss uh Miss Duncan is online.
Okay, uh thank you. So uh Miss Duncan, I believe you are online. You have five minutes to address council. Thank you.
Uh thank you very much. Uh good morning, uh Mr. Chair and members of council. My name is Sarah Duncan and I work with Forbes Brothers Limited. And we've been retained by Rogers to work with the city of Richmond Hill on the proposed tower located on West Beaver Creek Road. Uh we were previously here in September of twenty twenty four walking through the uh chosen site location and public consultation that was done. And at that time, it was requested we uh go back to the planning department to explore a few more um options. We've done that and now what I wanted to do today was just walk you through what's been done since September and just give you another uh sort of high-level overview of the site. Uh next slide, please. So this slide shows an overview of the area that Rogers requires a new site. There's no existing infrastructure in the area and coverage is required for residential and business services. Next slide, please. So uh you can see on this slide, this is the current coverage in the area in the middle, the very light green um with the number C eight one three six. That is where we are looking to put the tower site to improve that coverage. Light green is not our preferred coverage level. So if you go to the next slide, please. This provides an overview of the coverage that would be provided to the area by the twenty seven meter tall tower and um connect the network through the various sites surrounding it. Next slide, please. So this is the property on which the tower will be located. Uh the location was sec- selected because it addresses the coverage needs of Rogers, number one. It's in an industrial zone buffered by more industrial and woodlands to the west and south. It also has access and power and a willing landowner. So for all of those reasons, a lease was secured with the landowner and this is an appropriate location for Rogers network coverage. Uh next slide, please. Uh you can see here, the tower is located, it will be located in the northwest corner of the property. It's a twenty seven meter tall, light-duty uh self-support tower. No guide wires, obviously, in an in an urban location. And with this sort of design, it would allow for future colocation, either other carriers, emergency services or broadband, anybody that should request to co-locate on it. Next slide, please. So getting to this point in the process has involved significant consultation with the planning department and the residents. Um as noted here, we have gone through all the steps and um the planning department has advised that there are no outstanding land use concerns, thus meeting the objectives of the policy. Next slide, please. Um there are lots of feedback from the residents and we did communicate with them for over a year in regards to answering all those questions. Um as well, many questions about health and safety. However, we just want to confirm that Rogers installation will meet any requirements that Health Canada sets up through Safety Code six for the operation of the tower. Next slide, please. Pardon me. Um what I want to emphasize today is the design of the tower. Um unfortunately, there'd been some misinformation presented at the last meeting about the design. This is a photo sim of the twenty seven meter tower looking north from the south side of the property. As you can see, it's located at the back of the property and would be between a hundred and a hundred and thirty meters from uh the residences. Next slide. This uh would be the visibility from the top of the tower from Red Oak Drive, which was a major concern at our last meeting. Next slide. So the visual on the left is the tower that was presented um by residents at the last meeting. However, it is an inaccurate design and this is not what Rogers would be proposing proposing. Um as mentioned, it will be located at least a hundred to a hundred and thirty meter from residents and probably during full foliage seasons, it would not even be visible from Red Oak Drive. Next. Slide, please, sorry. Um after that, we went back to councillor um Chu. We looked at locating on the east side of Beaver Creek Road, which was not possible due to the uh unavailability of landowners who are interested and the existing sites that Rogers currently has in that area. Locating at the front of the property was not a desired location for the landowner due to the traffic on-site and parking restrictions and exploring colocation options.
Duncan, if uh if you can wrap up, you're actually over time. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. This is my last slide. Um or there's one left. The uh exploring colocation options, there was nothing left. So in summary, we're asking council to support the recommendation of the planning department, that there are no land use issues outstanding and that we have met the objectives of the and that we have met the objectives of the municipal policy based on the, a fact that there will be no impact to the streetscape. It's appropriate located from surrounding residential uses, and it balances the need of connectivity and meeting the city's protocol.
Thank you very much, Ms. Duncan. Uh, now I'd like to turn the chair back to Counselor Liu.
Thank you very much, Counselor Thompson. Um, next on the uh delegation list is uh Mr. Justin C. Who is online? Go ahead, Mr. C.
Good morning, Mayor West and uh all the council members. Good morning. I was here before, in September of twenty twenty-four, and I'm here once again to strongly urge you not to support the proposed tele- communication tower at one-twenty West Beaver Creek Road. Uh, outline it in staff report S P S R P B S twenty-five dot oh four four. So I intend to address three critical issues. Number one, the potential i- negative impact on our community and the also potential health risk to our young families over here. Number two, the close proximity of the uh tower to the Doncrest Public School. So uh you can see this presentation, they didn't show uh where the public school is, and I will uh and I will show you on the Google map where it is actually located. It's very, actually very close to the proposed tower. And also, number three, if time permits, I will uh let you know the questionable needs for this tower at all. So number one, uh first, the potential negative impact of our community. Of course, uh the proposed cellphone tower threatens our and also diminish our quality of life to the neighborhood, to our neighborhood. And also, if the council will kindly refer to the map, one, the arrow uh photograph that we have on our on our presentation, uh on the presentation, on the report, you can see that uh right here, uh I don't think you can see it clearly, but uh it is very, actually very close uh uh to our backyard. It's actually only a hundred meters or three hundred and twenty-eight feet from the residential homes to the south, and also a hundred and thirty meters, uh which is four hundred and twenty feet from our home to the to the west. So, this raised very valid concerns uh on our property value, and also, most importantly, potential health risk to our young families. I myself, I I myself alone, I have a three-year-old daughter, and I know that there is a few family, because I live on Red Oak Drive, and I know a few family with young age, uh young kids with age two to thirteen at uh Red Oak Drive at uh number fifty-three, number sixty-seven, and number seventy-one. And uh like their houses are located there. And also, a new, my neighbor just moved in, uh at house number forty-one, expresses major concern as well, because they didn't know that there uh that there is a proposed construction of uh of a telekage, telecommunication tower, and also they bought it with a mortgage. So, this leads a very uh major concern for them. Uh, this also leads to uh issue number two, and how close it is to a a public school. The photo, the photograph they pro- they proposed did not show where the public school is. It's actually four kilometers away, and it's only a fourteen-minute walking distance from the this site. So, and there are about two hundred and three hundred kids from this public school, including a daycare there. My daughter used to go to a daycare over at Doncrest Public School. And all, we all know that young children are valuable to our community, uh especially now. And also, we need to take precautionary policies to guide the decision that will affect the well-being and for the future. And installing a tower that close to a school, that's not keeping with aligned with our spirit of a community and a safety of our community as well. And also, I would also like to highlight the lack of demand, that a self, a cellphone tower is although a telekage, telecommunication tower is necessary at this location. As you can see on the map, even moving and putting up this tower, you can see on a panic C that uh on this report, uh the so-called increased better coverage, it only benefits really our area, which is our community, which we did not even ask for. Now, and also approximately twenty percent increased coverage north of the area is a city-owned woodland area with forest and trees and open field. So, what is the point of all this? I asked the council. I do not understand why they would keep, Rogers would keep putting up the tower uh for us. So in conclusion, I urge the council to vote not to support this uh report and not to build a uh computer communication tower at one-twenty West Beaver Creek Road. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And next, uh we have Ms. Donna Chan. Also joining us online. Please go ahead, Ms. Chan.
Hi, um, good morning, Chair and council members. This presentation, oh, oh, okay. Um, this presentation urges council to reject staff report S R P B S dot twenty-five dot zero four four and the proposed cell tower at one-twenty West Beaver Creek. Next slide, please. The image on the left from Rogers shows current coverage in Doncrest with the proposed tower circled in the center. It claims a new tower is needed to fill a gap, namely an area with low signal. According to the color legend on the right, low signal areas are marked in red and gray, yet we don't see any here. So where's the gap? Next slide, please. This diagram shows the proposed coverage area with colors near the tower hitting the highest level on the legend, indicating strong radiation. The arrows points to homes and a school directly in this high exposure zone. With this information, how can we not be concerned about our family's health? Next slide, please. There is ample evidence that the installation and activation of cell tower will cause harm to people. Do we really want to jeopardize the health of our residents, especially our children? Next slide, please. If the cell tower is approved, would the legal risk fall on the councillors and the city? Rogers two thousand and twenty-three annual report acknowledges potential lawsuits related to sa- health concerns, suggesting they are prepared. But is the city equally protected? Next slide, please. This residence rendering shows how the proposed tower would disrupt the streetscape and key views. Next slide, please. The tower heights can increase by twenty-five percent without public consultation, as shown here. Keep this image in mind as we compare it to Rogers simulations in the next slides. Next slide, please. This rendering shows the view from a child's bedroom, just a hundred and ten meters from the proposed tower. The seven-meter building on the right shows how massive the tower would look by comparison. Next slide, please. This thirty-seven, sorry, thirty-three-point-seven-five-meter view shows the tower's growing destructive impact on the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Study finds cell towers near homes drop property value by two-point-four to nine-point-seven percent. Next slide, please. This is a simulation provided by Rogers. Without the black arrow in the middle, most of us may not even see the rendering tower. It's so small and blurry. Next slide, please. Rogers' image on the left shows only three pan- um antennas, though their documents say six. The tower in the right image is barely visible with no scale, height, or distance shown, making it look much smaller than in the residence rendering. Are they downplaying the real impact? Next slide, please. In closing, I sincerely thank the council for the strong support you showed at, you showed at us at last September's meeting. It gave our community hope and reassurance that our voices are being heard. Today, we ask you to continue standing with us by rejecting the staff report S R P B S dot two-five dot zero four four and not supporting the application for the proposed cell tower at one-twenty West Beaver Creek Road. This is about protecting our neighborhood and showing that council's values truly align with the community. Let's show once again that this council puts people first. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Chan. And next on the list is Ms. Joyce Fox, also regarding item eleven point one zero. Please go ahead, Ms. Fox. Unmute yourself. Perfect. You have to unmute yourself, Ms. Fox.
Apologies.
There you go.
Good morning, Mad- Madame Chair and members of council. I would like to present a brief response to staff report S R P B S dot two-five dot zero four four regarding the proposed cell tower at one-twenty West Beaver Creek. Next slide, please. The staff report recommendations items A, B, and C ask the council to receive, acknowledge, and direct staff with the end result appearing to be to approve the proposed cell tower. One hundred and seventy-one Doncrest residents and twenty-two West Beaver Creek commercial unit representatives oppose the proposed cell tower site at one-twenty West Beaver Creek and appeal to the city of Richmond Hill council to not support the radio communication and broadcasting antenna system public consultation application for the proposed cell tower at one-twenty West Beaver Creek Road by not accepting the staff report S R P B S dot two-five dot zero four four. Next slide, please. Understanding government jurisdiction. According to Innovation Science and Economic Development Canada ISID, noting Industry Canada officially became ISID on November fourth, twenty fifteen, ISID does not issue a formal authorization to the proponent to build a cell tower. If the land use authority indicates concurrence to the proponent, that is considered approval for the tower to proceed. ISID does not play an active role in the consultation process since land use authorities are better situated to represent council, uh to represent local needs. The ISID dispute resolution process is not automatically activated. ISID only becomes involved if requested to do so by either the proponent or the L U A. How do we know this? We asked ISID. Next slide, please. Relationship to protocol objectives. According to staff report item two, the applicant has fully complied with the city's sub- submission and public consultation requirements, end quote. City staff acknowledged in an email that requirements have generally been met, end quote. Forbes use incorrect public notification radius. Did not comply with the Richmond Hill protocol by including notification letters to circulated residence template with the public notification package. Uh, it took eight, took more than eight months to bring the application to council. The community information session wasn't adequate, questions were not adequately answered, and some citizens did not have the opportunity to speak. Irregularities relating to the application form were identified, and not all questions submitted have been adequately answered. Item number three, quote, the location of the proposed antenna system does not impact the existing streetscape and any significant sightlines, end quote. This is spectacularly incorrect, as we can see by the residence renderings provided. Next slide, please. Item four, quote, the proposed antenna system is appropriately located at an acceptable distance from surrounding residential uses, end quote. The tower si- is site is a one hundred and ten meters from a young child's bedroom and four hundred meters from the Doncrest Public School. There is ample evidence that if the proposed cell tower is installed and activated, people will be harmed. More than forty peer-reviewed science studies have provided biological harm, have provided biological, proved biological harm from long-term exposure to people living within four hundred meters from a s- from cell tower-type radiation sources. Item five, quote, the proposed antenna system appropriately balances the need to provide a le- high level of technical service to residents surrounding properties and users, end quote. Forbes has not shown an existing gap in service. Item six, quote, the proposed antenna system has been designed to support colocation, end quote. This will increase the unsightly impact on the existing streetscape and sightlines and increase radio frequency microwave it microwave emissions and exposures. Next slide, please. Councils in Ontario have turned down towers for reasons of public opposition. Council to uh cell tower is unsightly and diminishes enjoyment of pro- uh property. Location is not suitable and health concerns. Next slide, please. We request uh council, please do not support or accept staff report S R P B S dot two-five dot zero four four. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rula Zapane. Also regarding item eleven point ten. Please go ahead. You have five minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I would like to draw your attention to seven questions that were asked of ISID and their responses. Next slide, please. Does ISID issue a formal authorization letter, a license, or any kind of permit to a proponent to build a cell tower? The answer is no. Quoting ISID's response, ISID does not issue a formal authorization to the proponent, end quote. So who actually approves the cell tower? Next slide, please. Is a letter of concurrence considered to be the approval to proceed with putting up a cell tower? The answer is yes. Quoting ISID's response, if the L U A indicates to the proponent that it concurs with the proposal, the tower site is approved, end quote. Next slide, please. Three. Is it the responsibility of city council to provide a letter of concurrence or non-concurrence? The answer is yes. Quoting ISID's response, as L U As are best positioned to understand their community's needs and are involved in local consultations, ISID expects L U As to be engaged in the process and provide concurrence or non-concurrence with regards to antenna tower sighting, end quote. Next slide, please. Four. Is it up to the city council to determine that the protocol in place has been bull- fully complied with and that both the land use and the public consultation aspects have been fully completed? The answer is yes. Quoting ISID's response, the public consultation process allows L U As to make informed decisions. Members of the public are encouraged to bring their concerns regarding the project and the consultation process to the L U A for consideration, end quote. Five. If a council submits a letter of concurrence that includes comments about concerns and/or conditions, would ISID have any role in trying to mediate those concerns? The answer is no. Quoting ISID's response, once concurrence has been given, the consultation pro- process is considered closed, end quote. Next slide, please. Six. If a council has relevant concerns relating to the full completion of the protocol process, whether relating to land use and/or the thoroughness of public consultation, does the city council have the option to submit a letter of non-concurrence? The answer is yes. Quoting ISID, L U As can reject a tower proposal by submitting a letter of non-concurrence to the proponent, end quote. Seven. Is it correct that ISID does not play a role in the cell tower application? The answer is yes. Quoting ISID, ISID does not play an active role in the consultation process since land use authorities are better suited to represent local needs. ISID will become involved in the process if requested by the L U A or the proponent, end quote. I would like to thank the Member of Parliament staff for for facilitating these questions and answers directly with ISID Ottawa office and for providing ISID's responses. I would like to add that two ISID spectrum offices, one in Alberta and one in Ontario, have provided the same answers to these questions. Next slide, please. A hundred and seventy-one Doncrest residents and twenty-two West Beaver Creek commercial unit representatives appeal to the city of Richmond Hill to not support the radio communication and broadcasting antenna system public consultation application for the proposed cell tower at one-twenty West Beaver Creek Road by not accepting the staff report S R P B S dot twenty-five dot zero four four. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And last but not least on the list, Ms. Margaret Friesen. Please go ahead.
Yes, good morning, Mayor West and councillors. I'm also delegating with regard to this proposed cell tower. Next slide, please. I am a retired biologist with the federal government. I've got a bachelor's degree in zoology and a master's in entomology-toxology and over third year, thirty years' experience as a research biologist with the federal government in University of Manitoba. Post-retirement, I have investigated the literature intensively on this issue and I'm the science advisor environmental health issues for Canadians for Safe Technology. Next, please. So I've had experience with numerous cell tower situations across Canada more than twenty-five years as an individual and with Canadians for Safe Technology and all of this work has been done as a volunteer. I get no remuneration at all. Next. So over the years, there have been a number of councils that have voted non-concurrence. This is not unusual. I'm just giving you three examples from Ontario, Bracebridge and Pendangalishine and Pickering. And the reasons vary, public opposition, cell tower is unsightly and diminishes enjoyment of property, the location is not suitable, and also health concerns have been expressed. Next, please. This is just an example of what the town of Bracebridge said. Next, please. This is Penetang in Ontario, non-concurrence. Next, please. And the city of Pickering. Again, non-concurrence. Next, please. So Forbes Brothers is a company hired by Rogers to respond to questions from the public. My next few slides will have to do with the shortcomings in the, in the public consultation process. So Forbes, although apparently representing Rogers, would not confirm that the information it provided to residents was agreed to by Rogers and there's verification there. In other words, Forbes did not attest information provided was supported by Rogers. Next, please. The Doncrest community has shown that the proponent has not fully complied with the City of Richmond Hill protocol. And Innovation Science Economic Development, I said, the federal department that oversees this, states that the proponent must follow local process where one exists. Even the city staff says requirements generally have been met. In other words, Forbes has not fully complied is the inference there. And it is confirmed by the Doncrest Community Group that there are seven important irregularities and/or emissions and that is documented in communications to the council. Next, please. So Forbes did not adequately answer some questions from the public. For example, Forbes was asked if this wireless service was mandated. And in the first response, the question was deleted. In the second response, Forbes did not answer the actual question and again did not answer the question the third time. Next, please. The Rogers was asked how they will evaluate Safety Code Six, so those are Health Canada's guidelines, for massive memo, multiple, massive multiple input, multiple output beam-forming phased arrays and full duplex technology. This is entirely new technology where beams are focused. And so it is conceivable that beams from various sources from other cell towers or other antennas could intersect and really the estimation is based on calculations. So Forbes did not adequately answer this question. I think it's an important one that should be adequately addressed. Next, please. So the question of whether the total number and type of antennas and transmitters is open, as you just heard from Sarah Duncan, the Forbes representative, she basically said that there would likely be certainly open to co-location, including anybody. What that means is sort of is a real open question. Forbes itself has said in the documentation, it is possible that in the future another carrier, for example, Bell Freedom Mobile, might share this tower location. And I just want to show you a picture of, of the before and after. So we know it's a ladder structure. It's not this monopole that you see. But basically, if you look at the number of antennas on the before picture, the initial installation, and the now picture, you can see that it kind of looks like a Christmas tree. And once the, once concurrence is given, which is what I think is going to happen if you accept the staff report, then it's taken out of the hands of everybody except for the Rogers. And they will be required to consider co-location from other carriers and very likely that is what will happen. So we really don't know what it will look like. And we've already had a depiction of what it would look like from somebody's back backyard. And of course, they can, they can increase the height of the tower twenty-five percent without public consultation. So you know, what you saw, increase that and of course, the reason that they do that is so that other telecommunications companies can co-locate. So that means there would be more antennas and other, other equipment. Next, please.
Ms. Friesen, I would like to ask you to please wrap up. You're already one minute over.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is my last slide. Sorry. But it is appeal to the council. So I urge you to support the Doncrest residents. Ah, I don't have my camera on. I'm sorry. Somebody should have told me.
It's okay. No worries. Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry. So anyway, I urge, I urge you to support the Doncrest residents and others such as West Beaver Creek Commercial Unit representatives by not supporting the application for the proposed tower and by not accepting the staff report. And the number is there. So thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, thank you. All right. So that's exhausted our delegations list and then I'm going to put this on the floor, item eleven point ten. This is in Ward six. So councillor Shu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just before I move forward, I received an email during this meeting. It says that the staff does not concurrent with the establishment of this proposed cell phone tower. Is that correct? I've received this email. So you have revised your recommendation now, right? Just want to clarify this point.
Through the chair. No, that email was just to provide alternative wording depending on what council decides today. It's not a change in our position.
Okay, thank you so much. So thank you for the delegates for speaking not only from the resident's perspective, but also from the professional engineering standpoint. I have to say, I'm disappointed that nothing has changed regarding the request to co-locate this unpopular construction. There's nothing changed actually. They're still in the same location, one twenty West Beaver Creek Row, and come back to the council again. So before I move forward, I would like to raise a motion to deny this staff report. And like, yeah.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. As I understand it, the councillor, it's not denying the staff report respectfully. It's actually just council would be expressing an opinion on the application and I have appropriate wording for that, which I can put on the screen. So.
Okay.
Okay. So let's take a look.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So basically, A and B is the same, are the same.
Yes.
As in the staff report, I think. Are you happy with C?
Yeah, that is, does not concurrent the establishment. Yes. I think the language is good enough.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Clerk, and we have a motion on the floor. Do you want to continue?
Yes, I want to continue to express my concerns as well. Just want to clarify this. This is not a city infrastructure project, actually, or simply just granting a building permit, just simply. It's something that needs to be discussed in the chamber, in these chambers, because it's not only the building safety or just simply following the city's code. It's about the neighbor's well-being and the sense of belonging living in our city that makes them call Richmond Hill home. We have responsibility and duties to make them feel like living in a home in Richmond Hill. So I also that, I think it's actually Rogers and the agent Forbes who are pushing us to approve the business expansion again. Let's not forget, Rogers is not the only provider offering 5G. This is not the only choice. And right now, there's no official mandate requiring the people using 5G. Unlike the other planning requirement, like official plan or secondary plan, it's not the mandate to build a cell phone tower in that area. And also, building a cell phone tower is not the only way to roll out 5G in the future. And also, in the staff report regarding the public consultation, to my best of my knowledge, only residents within one twenty meters radius were invited to join this public consultation, but not for those who work in that area. Since many of these workers spend around seven hours a day and five days a week in that area, I believe they are also impacted and should have been included in the consultation. But they were not. So therefore, I think the consultation process were not comprehensive enough, actually. And I totally get that the final, the final decision on this construction is not up to the municipal government, is up to the ISED. And it's actually the federal ISED that has the final say. We understand that. And we also understand that health is not the issue and the property value is not the issue talking about this issue in these chambers. We all understand that. But there was a letter I can show and read out the letters from MP Mchuchuhari in a writing after the previous meeting, talking about this issue last time. It is a letter of MP Chahari to the Minister of Innovation, Science, and Industry last time. I am writing to share concern raised by my constituents in Richmond Hill regarding the proposed Rogers Telecommunications Tower at one twenty West Beaver Creek Row on September eighteen, twenty twenty-four. The Richmond Hill council vote humanely not receive the staff report and request further investigation into alternative locations for the proposed tower. This action reflects widespread opposition from the residents and business owners within the Doncrest community. And the Richmond Hill protocol for public consultation also appears to have experienced substantial delays with the consultation period extending over five thirty-eight days compared to the typical one twenty days specified in both ISA and the Richmond Hill guidelines. So I think it's good enough to let my council colleagues to consider this letter from MP Chahari to the minister for your consideration, not to go into support this staff report. I'm now seventeen seconds. Okay, I will leave the rest for my second round. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shu. So we have a motion on the floor. Next speaker is Regional and Local councillor DePaula, joining us online. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with the mover of the motion. I would be happy to second this motion on the screen at council when the time comes and, you know, the most compelling reason that in my mind is that the fact that the residents of the, of the neighborhood, the ones that would benefit from using this tower are in consensus and clearly are against it. So I'm not taking any objection to what our staff has found and I think they've done their due diligence properly. I'm not, I'm not arguing anything in the staff report, but I think this is where council has an opportunity and an obligation to devote the will of the neighborhood. And you know, if they don't, if they don't want this service, then, then why should it be imposed on them? You know, it's very different from when a, you know, a condo building is in an, in, proposed in an area. It is typical that the area residents object and opposed anything new changing in their neighborhood. But, but in that case, there's a, you know, a different consideration because there's a larger implications. There's an appeal process that can be costly for the city. If council votes down a tower that can be overturned and approved on appeal, there's, there's, there's benefit in terms of us saving our targets, our housing units. We are required to have some housing. We need more affordable housing and in general, we have, you know, a crisis. So there's, you know, typically would be on a transportation corridor. We, we need to know, we, we need to approve those projects and a lot of times I'm on the other, the other side and it's very difficult to say to a neighborhood, I know you don't want this, but there's reasons why we have to permit it. But in this case, we really don't. We, we, we're not required in any way to, to, to have this. There, there, the process, the determination is going to be made at another level. It's a federal jurisdiction. But as far as this council, our input, I agree wholeheartedly that that we, we should be directed to inform Science and Economic Development Canada that it, it does not, we do not concur with the establishment of this tower and this site. We, and, and I hope that together with the letter from the local MP and, and other opposition that the federal body regulating this will make the right decision. There are other opportunities for residents in the area to get self-out, so, sell reception into their neighborhood and there, you know, many other ways for this area to be serviced, as was said by the ward councillor. And I, not, not having, not seeing one member of the community saying, "I really want this. This is something I've been looking forward to." Not, and no one in the area having a problem with the current coverage and annoying myself being in the area. I've never had a problem anywhere in the south of Richmond Hill with my, with, with my cellphone. So, you know, I wholeheartedly agree with the motion on the floor. And I think it's right and proper that, that the council expressed the community's will to the, to the federal governing body on, on the erection of cell towers. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I have a speakers list and then next is councillor Silivitz and then councillor Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to everybody who spoke and, and gave presentations for this particular, this particular agenda item before us today. I want to take this moment to also congratulate the Ward six councillor for the manner in which he has dealt with this, this, this issue. I think that he has done a stellar job. I would not have supported the original motion, but I certainly support this one. I, why, I do believe there's been enough sufficient public consultation from what I've read and what I've heard. One of the slides, I think it was slide number twelve, I can't remember which presentation stated there wasn't, but I, I don't believe that that is actually correct. I, I'm not one of those people who subscribes to the notion that cell towers are bad for our health. We are surrounded by microwave background and radio frequency background constantly, most especially because all of us use these. And the minute we hold these, they become even closer. If the human eye could see microwave and radio frequencies, we would be astonished to see what it, the soup in which we are actually living. So I don't believe that specific cell towers may exacerbate this health-wise at all. But that's my opinion. Notwithstanding that, I absolutely agree with the residents and I agree with the, the approach of, of the, the local councillor. What I would like to, to bring up is I am very surprised at the locate, this, the location, suggested location for this particular self, cell tower. We have on the east side of East Beaver Creek. It is just commercial and industrial. And then we have Highway four oh four right next to it. We have Highway seven and Highway four or seven to the south. When you drive along our highways, you see these cell towers. That is exactly where they belong. Another presentation showed, albeit a cell tower that grew that was along the highway. That is where these, these towers belong. They do not belong within residential areas. And for me, it would be aesthetically not a good idea. I have had this in Ward five. We had one that my residents fought in Ward five a couple of terms ago, and I supported that. And it was ultimately, didn't even come to council. It was, the application was ultimately withdrawn. So kudos to all the residents who have stepped forward here. I salute you. Your voice is very, very important. And just, just as an aside, in California, when I've been there, I've noticed that their, their cell towers or their communication towers are encased in material that makes them look like very, very tall trees. And that is a very, very good idea, especially when you're driving into the mountains. And it perhaps might, it might be a good idea for, for our people here in Ontario and Canada to examine that because aesthetically, it certainly makes those cell towers look much, much better. And it also provides nesting, nesting locations for, for eagles and storks. So again, thank you for bringing this forward. And thank you to the, to the local councillor, Councillor Shu. He's done a superb job here, and thank you to the residents. And I, I absolutely will support the motion that is before us now including, within the inclusion of C. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Davidson.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'm getting so confused about what the purview is of this council regarding cell phone towers. So through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask staff. What happens if this council says no, we just, we say no to the staff recommendations and we say, no, we don't want this cell tower here? Does it matter?
Commissioner?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The, the part of the process or the role the council plays in the consultation process is to take all the comments that come in from the residents and the proposal from the proponent themselves and to make a, a recommendation to ISA as to whether they support the, the proposed facility or not. You're asking me if it matters? Yes, it does, because those comments would then be packaged up and forwarded to ISA, putting forward the, the council's position. So yes, it does matter. Council's role matters, as does everyone else is in the process.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So this is a coun, a consultation of not just residents, this council too. We say, here's what we're thinking. Aside from whatever the regulations are, we're taking into, into consideration the human aspect of people not wanting it in their neighborhood. They don't like the look of it. It's not just strictly based on, on data points. Is that the point? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The actual, the municipality's role really is to, to facilitate the consultation process to get all those comments put forward. But really, at the end of the day, is the role of the staff in the process is to determine whether there's a land use conflict or not. How you define land use conflict itself is not defined. It would touch on those matters that you're referring to as well. It could. Staff are looking at it simply from a land use conflict perspective. We don't look into the issues of the safety of the cell tower or even its aesthetics, for example. It's strictly, is there a land use conflict that's put on the abutting properties as a result of that facility being placed where it's being proposed?
Thank you. I do wanna, I wanted to make a couple of, of comments. I, I searched and searched for scientific-based evidence that cell phones cause health issues. And Health Canada says, based on available scientific evidence, there are no health risks from low-level radio frequency, and they specifically point out cell towers, cell phones, five G. I searched the Canadian Cancer Society. They said there's no current evidence to suggest cell phone towers cause short-term or long-term effects. I checked autism, I checked ADHD, and there's really no scientific data that is peer-reviewed and supported that says that these towers cause a health risk. So it's down to me whether or not the aesthetics of it are enough for us to say no. I, I, I've never heard of a street signing a petition to have a cell tower near them. But the, the rest of the neighborhood also pays for cell service. So i- it's really difficult to decide the greater purpose. I don't know enough about cell service to know if the blue or purple areas on the map that Rogers showed us, if they mean there's a problem or someone complained. But yeah, I look forward to a little more discussion here. I really am, I am, I'm conflicted as to what we should do in terms of allowing service that we all use cell phones and, and completely sympathizing with neighborhoods that don't want these ISOs in their neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Regional and Local Councillor Deputy Mayor Chen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Let's begin by saying it's very difficult in terms of the position of any council, a municipal council be put on. Because this is something the federal government has a mandate that in the staff report is said very clearly. There's one body, one authority, although they may not be actively saying that approved or not. But they are the one that hold the decision-making to situation like their conflict, like what's being brought up here. I also want to thank that all the delegates, in addition to certainly the, from Forbes Brothers, but all of them, they are present very thoughtful and, and well-prepared slides and presentation to that. I extend my sincere appreciation for what you have done. One of the challenge is that this, as a commissioner of planning answering the Councillor Davidson, that the municipality, generally speaking, is asked to comment on the land use matters. So that really put us, meaning not just Richmond Hill municipalities, that's the angle we're looking at. Yes, health concern is in most people's minds. And however, we as a council, we have no say on it. And but on that note, I do get a sense that the resident porno, some of the issues I'd like to explore further, further, the chair. On page seven of the staff report, it does say, towards the end of the page, while does not create any land use planning conflicts with the current use of land, blah, 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 and so on. But then it can't be further. The proposed tower is located at an acceptable distance from the existing residential area. My question is, what constitutes an acceptable distance? Through you, Mr. Chair, can it be spell out hundred meters, four hundred meters, five hundred meters? What is the acceptable distance?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Again, that term is not defined. We're looking at it strictly through the lens of land use impacts. So the, the criteria, if you will, in reviewing that is really, will that tower being located where it's proposed actually diminish the function of the residential property it's in proximity to or the industrial property it's in proximity to? Will you not be able to use your backyard or does it cause some sort of setback concern? Or on the industrial properties, does it create a parking or loading concern? These are the land use impacts. It's, it's the actual use and utility of the properties that it abuts.
Thank you. And through Mr. Chair, it's been touched on, but I want to refer to the staff report. Page six specifically, specifically mentioned. Objection should see be passed by the majority of council. An objection would trigger and actually reflect in one of the delegates' presentations as well. A dispute resolution process. Who's initiated would that be through you, Mr. Chair?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. That process specifically, so what would happen if council does not concur with the, the establishment of the facility? An impasse basically occurs. And then there is a dispute resolution mechanism that ISA actually controls. But that's only on the triggering of one of the parties involved. So for example, if council turn this down, there's no reason for them to act unless they feel to do so with ISA. Your resolution would go to them, but perhaps the proponent might go and say, I want dispute resolution here. And I want to have ISA involved. That's when that actually gets triggered. They take information in and ultimately they would make some sort of recommendation.
Thank you. Delegates also have shown or pointed out that there's some deficiency realities in terms of compliance with the city protocol. To that end, through Mr. Chair, perhaps to other city solicitor, commissioner, planning, what would be the city's star reaction? Who's that position is that, I guess, is generally met? So I think that term has been repeated a couple of times by delegate in terms of compliance with the city protocol. Is there any further comment?
Through you, Mr. Chair. My understanding is that the, the protocol requirements for that consultation were followed. I'm not aware of any concerns or issues with respect to not meeting the actual notification of the, in accordance with the protocol.
Thank you. So the, the last comment, I guess I did a question, I did raise the term solicitor. It's not, in a generic sense, I'm just wondering, would the city in any potential liability should? Or maybe it's not the time to talk about here. And I'd just like to hear through Mr. Chair. I see some, but I wanted for the record, yeah.
Yeah, through the chair to Deputy Mayor Chen, that would not be an appropriate question to answer at this time.
Okay, I think it's important to know because we all have a responsibility here. That on one hand, we are sympathetic to the Donquest community and the delegates from what they're saying. On the other hand, we have to think about the interest of the corporation. So I have no further common question, perhaps. I just want to share that the city protocol, as I understand it, is also actually basically a border after the Federation of Canadian municipalities that have been worked in the Canadian Wireless Association that I'm aware of in my role previously as the director of the FCM. So perhaps this is something that I'm more than happy to relay back to FCM colleagues. We somewhere we can further improve upon it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next is Councillor Tree.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chair. So I, I thank you for all the delegations come here to express your concerns. I just want to bring this again. So ISA, as one of the residents, I think Rula already mentioned, ISA is really a pound to, depends on the conquers or non-conquers from a local municipalities. So I don't think they're going to make a jurisdictions on the decision made by local council. So it's really upon to local council to make decisions. I think ISA just look at our package and review what our consensus is. So this is the one point. Also regarding to the, the planning team, as our commissioner mentioned, the planning team is just looking from the planning perspective, they are not like, as I said, they are not looking for health and anything else. So from a report perspective, that report generated by the planning team is based on their working scope, their specialties. So not beyond that. And from now on, so this motion in front of us, I fully support. I heard a lot of concern regarding to the locations, the health, the property value, et cetera. So yes, I heard you. I don't want to repeat one more time. So from my personal experience perspective, just answer Councillor Davidson's question. How the radiation hurt me or hurt anyone else? I was on a conference call using my wireless telephone for three hours and after died by left ear, got infections. So my friends drive me to accident magazine hospital at night time. I start vomiting. I could not walk and drive at all. I could not walk. I lose my balance. So I was there. This is my first time as adult, getting vaccine injections in a hospital. I haven't go to hospital for that type of service at least forty years. Since then, around ten years ago, I could not take any kind of, you know, if you go to Wonderland or other places for those big ratings, I could not take anymore. So radiation really hurting people. And that's my personal experience. I just want to bring it here as well, just for constitutional health, right? So radiation, microwave, whenever it's wireless or is wired. So you have to keep certain distance also for the frequencies and densities there as well. Otherwise, if this close to our community, close to your body, definitely good impact. And another one is for the, the locations here. Remember, in this area, we're not only have one service provider, which is Rogers, but also have bells and other service providers as well. So are we really mandated? I don't think so. So the service can be benefits people. If the residents does not like or in favor of this service provider, they do have a choice to choose others. So I just recommend Rogers as well, please reconsider your solution. There are not only one solution on the table, there may be different choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor West.
Thank you. Okay, so I appreciate this discussion and, and quite honestly, I, I've been on council a number of years now. We've, we've had these discussions a number of times. It's kind of frustrating because the process is not like anything else that we have the actual jurisdiction to approve. I, I will support the motion in front of us and, and I do appreciate that this process has been going on for quite some time. And, and council in fairness tried i- in the last time that this came to council to, you know, work with the applicant to get it moved. And I understand that the applicant has, you know, and sympathize with the applicant, that they weren't able to find an alternative. But, you know, the, the same concerns from the resident still exist. You know, the practical side of me, you know, which I think is important as, you know, elected official here that are looking out for, you know, the, the interests of the community as a whole, does kind of say, well, you know, I mean, a lot of us have cell phones and, and it's becoming increasingly common that, you know, we don't even have landlines anymore. We just have cell phones. And in order for that to continue to happen, we do need to continue to have a network that supports that technology. So I mean, unless we're planning on going back and, and not having cell phones, which I mean, is not, at least in my, certainly in my life, is not very realistic. You know, we are going to start to see more and more places where cell towers are going to be proposed and people aren't necessarily going to like it. I, I get that there is uncertainty around the health effects, and I appreciate Councillor Davidson's comments that, you know, there is no conclusive peer-reviewed evidence that I'm aware of that would, you know, overwhelmingly suggest that cell phones are, are causing some of the problems that we're talking about. But, you know, there is that understanding and, and so on out there in the world. But what I understand from speaking to the commissioner of planning and the questions have been asked so far is that if we pass this motion today, it will go to ISA and, I mean, there will be a dispute, almost certainly. And when that dispute happens, they'll be asking, well, why, why are we turning it down? And I'm, I'm just concerned, and I'll just, I'm just being honest, that, you know, the, the reasons that we're giving for turning this down are not creating a really strong case. And, and I, I am assuming that ISA may end up approving this anyway and, and it'll end up happening. But I mean, as the municipality, I, I guess maybe what we're doing in some ways is putting the jurisdiction back to ISA, given that we've had, you know, it's very well defined concerns and, and organized well by the community in this area. Then I think it's worth it for us to be able to say, you know what? Let's, let's give it another shot to see if, if ISA can, can, you know, within the jurisdiction that they have, be able to make a final decision on this. You know, we've kind of suggested that we stand in, in, in unison with the, the community at this point in time. And, you know, with the limited jurisdiction that we have, we're making that communication to ISA and ISA can, you know, ultimately make the final decision. So I will be, I, I will be happy to, to do this. But again, I But again, I, I just, you know, I always try to make sure I see both sides of the story. And, and, you know, I mean, I know at the end of my street, there is a, a building with a, a cell site attached to the side of the building. And, you know, I, I mean, it's everywhere. And, you know, some people are going to live closer than other people. But, you know, we do live in a, in a society where, you know, there is a lot of this type of development going on and there will be more, you know, as, as time goes on. So it is, it is going to consistently be an issue that this council is going to have to grapple with so long as the process that we're given is, you know, remains unchanged. So anyway, those would be my comments. And I'm happy to support the motion and I appreciate councillor Shu's work on this with the community. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Thank you very much. Through you, the chair. I, I definitely appreciate all the, the delegates that presented. I appreciate all the comments received from colleagues today. Particularly councillor Davidson asked in regards to what our role is here because I had the same confusion. Because I, when I looked at the original motion before, you know, the, the change in wording here, I was trying to sort out exactly where this leaves us. So it seems to me that if I'm understanding correctly, the process is after staff have reviewed and provided their comments, now it becomes up to council to decide whether a letter of concurrence or non-concurrence should go to ISID. Now, the mayor had also indicated that there would be reasons that go with that. But I don't see any reasons here. Am I wrong in that assumption?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The reasons would only come to fore if there was a request to, to go into dispute resolution and ISID would ask for additional information. Quite frankly, I don't recall the city having gone through that process. When council has turned these, these types of applications down in the past, they haven't proceeded to a dispute resolution necessarily. Doesn't mean it won't happen in this case. But what information, whatever we are asked for, we will provide. And if it's to summarize or to outline the concerns that were expressed at the meeting, we will certainly provide that record or a video record or an audio record, whatever it may be of this meeting, will be forwarded to, to ISID, depending on what they request.
Right, thank you, and through the chair, and that is very helpful. Because when I looked at all the information that was here, okay, so from a land use perspective, we didn't seem to really have a conflict. But at the same time, out of all the stuff that we saw here, I didn't really see anything that supported the need from the applicant. I couldn't understand exactly what was going on. When we looked at their own charts and the way they color-coded it and so forth, it certainly didn't throw off any alarm bells that, that said there is a real dire need here. So that, that's my comments in this particular case. I certainly agree that there, I don't, I don't see, I, I can't concur with what the applicant is requesting here. So I fully support the, the motion that councillor Shu has put forward here. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a request for second round, councillor Shu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My last word is to, just want to repeat one more time. This is not only a city's infrastructure project or simply just renting a building permit. It's something needs to be discussed in the chambers. Because as an elected officials, we are not just only following the city's code, but also we have to care about the well-being and also make our residents a sense of belonging, living in our city. There's our job too, not only following the city's code. And also I want to point out that building a cellphone tower is not the only way to offering 5G technology. It's not the only way. And Rogers is not the only provider to provide 5G technology. There's so many choices in the market. And building a cellphone tower to make the nearby residents uncomfortable living in our city, I don't want to see that. So my last word is to the applicant. If the applicant still believe that is the best board, then they should take up with the ISA and make their case there instead of putting pressure back on the council. To be honest, I don't think 120 West Pivac is a bad spot because it's too close to the residents and make them not comfortable living in our city. But I'm willing to work with the staff and also work with the applicant further to find in other locations. Because I'm not going to support, I'm not going to oppose any cellphone tower, but I'm only opposed to build a cellphone tower at this location. 120 West Pivac is not really a good spot. That's the only point I have to carry out this time. And the last one, even MP Johari is going to oppose this location. So just please be consider this as well. That's my last word and that's all my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. On the second round, regional and local councillor, Deputy Mayor Chan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Actually, I have time left early on, but I forgot to ask this one. Almost virtually all delegates except from Fobus Brothers have mentioned Don Quest School. And I looked at the staff report that there's no objection, no objection page seven and eight, including internal city departments as well as other places such as electric utilities. The question through you, Mr. Chair, would the school board, the two school boards, public school boards, are they usually included in this consultation? The reason I brought it up is that one of the delegates, I believe, is shown, if I remember correctly, Durham Board of Education opposed that. So that's why I asked that question through Mr. Chair.
Commissioner?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Typically, the school boards would only be circulated on a planning act development application. And it's really within their purview to determine additional spaces required for students and that type of thing. In this case, they, the school board would have only been circulated if they were within the impact zone, if I can call it that. They were not, so they were not circulated on this proposal.
Yeah. The only other thing that I, I want to bring up is that if anything that anyone want to build, they have to apply for a building permit. That's another process they have to satisfy. But getting back to the point that some of my colleagues have been talking about, it is really a demand and supply issue that it really seems to be some question raised whether the demand is there. Certainly supplies based on the agent is eager to, to do it. But it's not clear what the demand is. The other thing too is interesting, local council just mentioned about the well-being. I mean, technically, correct me if I'm wrong, city solicitor, according to Municipal Act, the municipality like us under the sphere of jurisdiction, section 11 sub 2, we do have the authority to pass by law that if there's a relating to health, safety and well-being of persons. Now, it's challenging to define well-being here. Health is already, is talked about, is no scientific evidence to prove it. But I'm just saying it. But there's something that I honestly think the protocol need to be beefed up. Maybe that's something we can talk to FCM as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I'll be supporting the motion.
Okay, anyone would like to speak on the second round? Seeing none, so I'm going to call the vote on the motion on the floor. Recordable requested by councillor Shu. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, through the chair, voting on the motion of councillor Shu. Councillor Shu?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Liu?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Tree?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Davidson?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor West?
Yes.
Thank you. Regional and local councillor DePaula?
Yes.
Thank you. Regional and local councillor Chan?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion does carry unanimously.
Thank you very much. And advised by the clerk, I think we would be taking a fifteen minutes break. And then we'll come back and, and deal with the other items. Thank you. Fifteen? You want? Okay, it's up to council.
I would just call it, it is obviously up to council. I would suggest, you know, looking at the agenda. I, I know we have a few items left. I'm not sure if there's a lot of questions to be, but.
Okay, councillor Tree says he will be very fast. Okay, up to, up to council. Lunch? Put up your hands. Okay, so we'll take an hour?
An hour. Yep, yep.
All right, all right. We don't want the mayor to be grouchy, okay?
Assuming on consent, we're taking an hour lunch.
An hour lunch? Okay, we'll be back at twelve fifty. Thank you. Twelve fifty. We'll come back at twelve fifty. Yeah. No, 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 no.